All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and I'd like to call the Select Board Wage and Personnel Board meeting on Tuesday, October 14th at 5:45 here at the Lakeville Senior Center to order. We can just a quick confirmation of that from the board?
Hunt, present.
Yeah.
And Carbone here. Our Chair, Maureen Candido, is running a little late, so I'm going to start the show, and she'll be here as soon as she can. With that, Lakeham is recording and feeding live on Facebook. Is anybody else here recording the meeting? Seeing none, if we could all rise for a pledge of allegiance.
............................................................
Also joining us here this evening, we have our Town Administrator, Andrew Sufo, Colleen Leve, our Executive Assistant, or Executive Assistant to the Select Board, and Town Administrator, and Emily Saret down there is our Management Analyst. And at 6 o'clock, we'll be having a joint meeting with our Planning Board, who will be kind of filtering in and joining us at that time. So just to kick things off this evening, I'd like to dive into some Select Board announcements. We do have some vacancies, and we're still looking to go for a full complement on all our Boards, Committees, and Commissions. So some of these vacancies include an Associate Member for the Zoning Board of Appeals, a Member for the Board of Registars. We have three vacancies on the Cable TV Advisory Committee, one vacancy on the Energy Advisory Committee, one at-large Member for the Community Preservation Committee, one at-large Member for the Zoning By Law Review Advisory Committee, and one Member for the Communications Committee. So I know, again, I say this all the time, you're thinking about it, give one of us a call, we'll talk to you, and then I'll tell you what it's all about and the involvement to join one of these Boards Committees and Commissions. So any of the details on these positions can be found on our town's Facebook page or the town's website at lakeville.org under News. Okay, so we have some announcements. Ted Williams Camp Trunk or Treat, this is always an annual favorite, which will be held on Sunday, October 19th, from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m., and everybody is welcome. If you have any questions, you can reach out to the Parks Commission, and their information is on our website. We also have our Second Annual Snowperson Jubilee that's coming up. So starting October 4th, people can purchase a snowman for $25, and all these proceeds will be to benefit the Lakeville Animal Shelter. There'll be a Snowperson Village on Saturday, December 13th at 2:00 p.m., and there'll be some caroling, hot cocoa, and family and friends are all welcome, and there will be some prizes awarded. And we have the Lakeville Country Christmas Stroll, which is Saturday, December 13th, 2025, from 12 to 2:00 p.m. at Ted Williams Camp. There is a scheduled rain date for Sunday, December 14th. So these, as these, you know, approach us, we'll continue to remind everybody, but I know that these are favorite to a lot of our residents, so I know they want to just kind of mark the calendar on that. So we have some exciting news from the Justice Assistance Grant Program, otherwise known as JAG Awards Announcement. There were 171 municipal police departments that will receive grants totaling $3,941,482. There are 28 state agencies that will receive $1,559,120.6. And the town of Lakeville, we did make the roster here, will receive a grant of $22,605. And I believe that's going to be for the purchase of new tasers.
Go ahead.
All right, so excellent work securing that grant. I also have here a letter from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities dated October 9th, 2025, and it is indicating that we have reached safe harbor. So this certification is effective for a two-year period from February 27th, 2025, to February 26th, 2027. But please note that there's a lot of movement that could be happening over the next year, which could shift that a little bit, so we just want to make sure that we keep our eyes on that. So right now, we are in safe harbor. People are asking what that means. The state has a program, 40B Development, which is a, I don't want to say by right, but by right, they come in and propose a 40B project, and, you know, through special, you know, permit and comprehensive permit and the state approval, these projects typically will, you know, move forward. But right now, we have the ability to pass, hold, defer?
Yeah, we can have more, but we can have more of a say in how the project is funded or how it's done.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to make, you know, that announcement, because I know that there was some questions, you know, are we getting close, are we, you know, where are we? So right now, Lakeville's current subsidized housing inventory stands at 11.02%. So we can probably make sure that this letter gets up on the website, so people can refer to that. Okay, does the, any other members of the Board have any other announcements that they'd like to share? All right, with that, moving on to the Town Administrator Reports.
Thank you. So the Right to Farm and the Purple Heart Town Signs are starting to be put up. I think all eight are finally put up around town. So if you start to see those, you'll see them at the entrances to towns, to the town. Let's see, we posted for the Assistant Town Accountant several weeks ago, and we have quite a few good applicants, so we'll start interviewing this week. One other one is I met with the Town Administrators of Berkeley and Free Town regarding Quiet Zones. It's become quite apparent that most of our Quiet Zones need the maximum upgrades, which is generally in the $1 million neighborhood. So for us, that's about $2 million, Free Town, that's about 11, Berkeley's about 2. So a lot of moving parts, we haven't quite got the final reports yet, but it looks like a pretty uphill battle to do that. But the Board updated on all that.
Okay.
And that's pretty much all I have for this, this week.
Andrew, do you put your Town Administrator Reports online? I hadn't had a chance to look. I know that we had previously, because this might be nice, because you do a lot of work, and we get these every week. And I just think it's, it would be nice for our residents to be able to, you know, kind of tap in to see a lot of the movement that we don't always necessarily discuss here in our meetings, but just to kind of give people an idea, maybe we can put those up under your Town Administrator page?
Yeah, I have almost 50 of them now.
Well, there you go.
So, yeah, I can put them on. It was a goal of the meet for the new website to do that, but the website's kind of, works back for me right now, so I can put them on.
All right, well, that would be wonderful. The members, do you have anything for Andrew this time? No? Well, thank you for that. Okay, we do have a set of minutes to approve from October 6th. Did everybody have a chance to take a look? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Comments?
Yep, we can do that under discussion.
Oh, okay. Tom, man.
All right, it's okay.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the Select Board meeting from October 6th, 2025.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion in a second and discussion.
Yes, one addition I'd like to add on Page 6, under the discussion on hometown hero banners. I did note that I had an action to put together a proposal based off of some inputs that I received from my resident, so we can just have that noted, please.
Yep, so noted, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Obviously, go, sorry, that it'll be presented at a next future Select Board meeting.
All right, any others? Hearing none, roll, please.
Block eye.
Block eye.
And Carbone, eye. Okay, let's see here. All right, what's it here? Five minutes. All right, we can get through the vote for the articles, right?
Should be able to.
Okay. So moving on to Agenda Item 5, number 1, discuss a possible vote on articles to be placed on the Special Town Meeting Warrant. So I know that there was some back and forth over the last few meetings, because we had a deadline for submittals of the articles, and then came in front of the Board, and a couple of them fell off, and some came on, and so. Could you walk us through these, Andrew, where we are right now?
Yes, so Article 1 is the unpaid bills article. Those are the final amounts that we have. One, let's see, 1, 2, 5 of them are free cash, and one's retained earnings.
Okay.
Just the standard, one we kind of do every town meeting. Article 2 is a Community Preservation Committee article. Basically, it kind of sets the process of how they want to see appointments happen. That's kind of a standard for many other committees, and I think they wanted to kind of see that under their bylaw as well. Article 3 is Town Hall Reuse Funding Source, $25,000. Article 4 is a Conservation Commission, as well as a townwide setup of revolving funds. And then Article 5 is a Citizens Petition for Part-Time Health Insurance. And then one that fell off is the Regional School Committee Recall. The town of Free Town had some last-second questions and edits, and since we have to both match, we didn't think it was good to pass and then change.
Okay. With regards to that Regional School Committee Recall wording, are you involved in those conversations with their Town Administrator?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Because I know we'll both have to agree on this before it goes to any of our towns. So we're looking to put this on for the spring?
Correct. And Free Town, as far as I know, will have it on their next special, which is January 26th. So we'll know what they have, and just we'll mirror that. As far as I know, it's not many changes.
Well, I mean, I know that they have to be the same, but I think that this Board is probably going to want to weigh in and not just accept.
It's a good topic for two weeks.
A joint meeting?
A joint meeting that we have with Free Town.
Okay, that would be really good to put that on there, and I'm sure our Chair would feel the same about that. Okay, so this is it. So we've got five articles. Members, do you have any questions about any of these articles? Just for the public, we're going to be holding a warrant review on the 6th?
October 21st.
21st.
Yeah.
So that we'll be able to go through each one, read the articles, and just make sure that everybody has clarity as to what we'll be presenting on Town Floor on November 2nd, 12th. Okay.
Madam Chair, it should be noted that we have an attachment from the Conservation Commission that on October 9th at their meeting, they voted to support the warrant article for the revolving fund.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
By their Commission Chair, Nancy Yates, and then a subsequent attachment from Joseph Sullivan of Apollo Project Management regarding the breakdown of the $25,000 that is being set aside for the project at the Town Hall.
Excellent. Thank you for that, Paul. All right, well, hearing no further discussion, do I hear a motion to vote and accept all the warrant articles as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll, please.
Hunt, eye.
Block eye.
And Carbone, eye. Okay, and it is 6 o'clock, so I think what we'll do is we'll take pause here for a moment, and let's invite the Planning Board up to the table, and then you can call your meeting to order. Good evening. Over there?
Yeah, it's cozy.
We got it. And I think Jack should be arriving, but we'll have to pull over another chair.
Perfect.
You want me to call the, like, recall this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order? It is 6 o'clock. We are meeting this evening at the Lakeville Council on Aging, Thorndike Crossing, and this evening, I'd like everyone to introduce themselves, because we do have a new Associate Member since last we met, and I know there's a couple new Select Board Members, so.
Donna Day, Associate Member.
David Lodge.
Dan Wilga.
John Cabral.
And John Griffin.
Nice to see all you guys. Should do this more often.
Okay, so we had planned a joint meeting with the Planning Board this evening to discuss the Lakeville Country Club property, and we, with us this evening, we have some gentlemen here representing Thorndike, and they will be going through a presentation. There's a proposed project for the property, and because, you know, the Select Board and the Planning Board are kind of involved in these types of projects, it's really great to see you all, and I know you were here once before, and I think you've kind of got a nod to come back again, and that's where we are this evening, so.
Excellent.
Please.
Where's the best place to stand? Does matter for these cameras?
Lakeham, is there a better place for these gentlemen to stand, or?
Uh, it's really up to you. Over to the side.
I like this background.
Yeah.
This works.
All right, so we're going to be looking here?
Yes, we're going to be making a presentation on that screen there, so if you need to, please. Well, thank you all for allowing us to come before you, and particularly thank you for arranging a joint session. I haven't been to too many of these over many years, but it's really terrific. My name is Lloyd Geisinger, I'm the President of Thorndike Development. I'm here this evening with David Easteridge, my partner, Michael Devon, who's in charge of our community relations, and our Counsel, Matt Waller, who is with the firm of Robinson and Cole. As I was thinking about this presentation, it was hard to believe that it's been actually over, a little over a year since we presented to the Select Board, even longer since we presented to the Planning Board. And at that time, to refresh your memory, Thorndike was proposing that we put forward a project that would include 236 units, senior condominium buildings on a piece of land owned by the Lakeville Country Club, but not actually part of the Lakeville Country Club environment. In other words, it wasn't going to disturb the golf course or the clubhouse or anything like that. And I felt as though it made sense to try and present a, for us, a relatively modest project in the hopes that we could get to know one another, to see whether or not this was something that the town of Lakeville was interested in supporting, and with an expectation that if things went well, we'd be able to come back before the Boards, back before town meeting, and talk about the larger parcel of land. Well, I don't think it took more than a couple of minutes before someone asked me what our plans were for the remainder of the property. And as we went back and thought about it, I realized that we really needed to present a comprehensive plan so that we could give people a complete answer. And with that in mind, we went back to the owners, we restructured our arrangement, and we've developed a master plan, which we're going to show you this evening, and then we'll make the presentation available to you, Andrew, and you can put it on whichever sites makes the most sense. The, let me just, does this work? No, hold on. Michael?
Uh-oh.
Oh, was I doing right or wrong? Yeah, this isn't going to work. Maybe if I'm over here, let me just see.
Almost seems like the battery's dying.
Gone are the days of the poster boards. Huh? Does that work? Oh, yeah, what'd you do?
Train secret.
Excellent. So what I'd like to do over about the next 20 minutes is we'd like to give you an overview of the project, and then I'm going to turn the presentation over to Michael, who's going to talk about our recent experience in Halifax, where we have a project that's under construction. I would encourage you to take a drive-by. It's a senior community being built on commercially zoned land. We went through a town meeting process that was encouraged by the Select Board, and Michael will tell you a little bit about that, because I think it informs how we would propose moving forward with the town of Lakeville. We need to talk a little bit about the Chapter 61B status of the property. As you may or may not be aware, the Lakeville Country Club benefits from a special tax situation called 61B, and Matt is actually here to talk about that a little bit, and we'll wrap it up with just showing you some pictures of former communities that we've built. And this is Cal Harvey, who's also a member of Thorndike. He's here to take notes.
Serious apologies.
Okay. Ah, we're working. I think everyone knows where the Lakeville Country Club is, but if anyone watching at home, we're off of Route 79, and this gives you a little better sense. The property is accessed from Clear Pond Road. Clear Pond Park is directly across the street, and of course, Clear Pond beyond that. Right now, this is an 18-hole golf course. It includes the course itself, clubhouse, the parking lot, and the total yardage for the 18 holes is 6,265 feet. This is a public course and has been around for quite some time. This is our plan that we want to kind of walk you through this evening, and it involves recreating a nine-hole golf course. This would be a full-length nine-hole golf course, significantly upgraded from its current condition. Our plan is to, is to join forces with a professional golf management company. We have been talking with Sterling Golf, who manages 10 golf courses in the metropolitan area, to upgrade the golf course and as well as include a state-of-the-art practice facility, driving range, putting green, chipping greens, and then carving out from there a combination of three- and four-story condominium buildings and duplex townhouses. All of this is proposed as a senior community. We're proposing that the entire community be seniors, and if you look to the left at the bottom, below the scorecard, the, there are proposed a total of 424 condominiums. 112 of them are duplex homes, and the remainder are in three- and four-story buildings. I'd like to talk first about the condominium buildings. Again, these renderings are of the building that is currently under construction in Halifax. We're just completing the siding on the first building. Occupancies will take place in December, so not in the distant future. We can take people on tours if they're interested, but this just gives you a sense of a couple of the images. This happens to be two of the buildings that are on the village green, the poolhouse and whatnot, and it's this type of character that we want to try and recreate for the condominium portion of the, of the building. This is a shot across the central green at the building that's under construction right now, the first building where people will be moving in in December. This is that same building in a four-story version. The proposal has a combination of three- and four-story buildings. The three-story buildings would have 36 homes in them, the four-story buildings would have 48 homes in each one. Switching now to the duplex townhome portion, again, remembering this is all targeted for seniors, so all of these townhomes would have primary bedrooms on the ground floor. These are renderings of a community that we're building right now in Plymouth called Alden's Reach. It is a combination of, it is not an age-restricted community, but in Plymouth, we see a very heavy interest from seniors, having built five different projects over the last 25 years in Plymouth. So these are the, these are the homes that are targeting seniors. They've been very successful so far. We've just been starting moving in our first people and families. As you can see, our whole emphasis is very pedestrian scale, heavy emphasis on landscaping, creating a friendly walking environment. Turning my attention to the golf course itself, you know, the Lakeville Country Club has gone through a tough time, and, but it's, but we've talked with a number of people who are in the know, landscape, golf course architects, management company, they feel it's an excellent layout. They think the bones of the Lakeville Country Club are terrific, and that if, with sufficient funds invested, it can really become a wonderful course. Our plan is for this to be a municipal golf course, a public golf course, not private to the senior condominium. They would coexist, and we would expect to create a program that provided for Lakeville residents to get special rates. We also want to talk about some profit sharing with the Lakeville Country Club as a contribution against mitigation, which I'll get to maybe a little bit later, maybe another day, so. But just a couple of shots to give you a sense, these are, these are not shots of the Country Club itself, but this is the standard that we intend to bring this golf course up to, and that would start immediately. If we are successful at town meeting, we would begin this renovation immediately thereafter, because we want the quality of the golf course to be there when we are marketing the homes. Practice facilities are a big part of the program here. They're very, very popular. They're also an excellent profit center, so they're, they're a really nice addition. We're, we're showing a full driving range, as well as adjacent facilities, putting greens, pitching areas, that type of thing. And our plans right now, if the Board supports it, is to include a restaurant. We would be building an entirely new clubhouse, including a restaurant in that. We built a community called Red Mill Village in Norton about 20 years ago now, no, started 20 years ago, it's hard to believe. It was named Best Active Adult Community in the Nation, and we built what has been named Red Mill Crossing as part of Red Mill Village, which is a small, very New England retail-style building that has a restaurant in there that caters breakfast, that serves breakfast, lunch, and dinners three days a week. It's been very successful. It's been there now for 12 or 13 years, and I drive by there every now and then in the early morning, and it's very well-attended. That type of a restaurant seems like a really good fit with the community that would serve both the residents, the golf users, as well as the general public. Clear Pond Park, you know, directly across the street from the property. We would very much like to participate in giving it a new coat, to give it a facelift. It's a terrific amenity, it's a terrific asset for the town. It could use a little bit of help, and maybe that help includes a few new pickleball courts. The seniors love pickleball. Red Mill Crossing as part of Red Mill Village, which is a small, very New England retail style building that has a restaurant in there that caters breakfast, that serves breakfast, lunch, and dinners three days a week. It's been very successful. It's been there now for 12 or 13 years, and I drive by there every now and then in the early morning, and it's very well attended. That type of a restaurant seems like a really good fit with the community that would serve both the residents, the golf users, as well as the general public. Clear Pond Park, you know, directly across the street from the property. We would very much like to participate in giving it a new coat, to give it a facelift. It's a terrific amenity. It's a terrific asset for the town. It could use a little bit of help, and maybe that help includes a few new pickleball courts. The seniors love pickleball. It's actually a great location for the pickleball courts, a little more removed from the residential buildings, since some people find the noise of pickleball courts a problem, but that's something that we would hope to work with the town and be part of the program. From a utility standpoint, we need to work with the town to find a way to get the waterline extended from Route 79 down to the property. The wastewater would be handled through a private treatment facility. The leaching fields would sit underneath the driving range, and the wastewater treatment building itself, which is actually not much larger than a two-car garage, would be part of the utility building adjacent to it. I want to turn my attention now and share with you a couple of slides that we actually showed you a year ago. They're still very relevant. I think it's important that we all put things in perspective. I know that more often than not, real estate developers wear black hats. I have sold all my black hats. We're only interested in working in communities that want us to work here. We think we bring quality, we bring conscientious approach, and we need to help solve this housing problem. This information on these next couple of slides is taken from the U.S. 2020 Census, and it's not unique to Lakeville at all. It's actually very typical, but the percentage of Lakeville population over 55 has been exploding. So in 2000, it was 20% of the total population. In 2010, it was 22%. In 2020, it was 34%, and if we had information for today, it would be approaching 40%. Not surprisingly, young family percentages in Lakeville have been dropping. 31% in 2000, down to 23% in 2020. Obviously, if seniors are staying, aging in place, if they're staying in the homes in which they raised their families, but they're not moving out, allowing that family home to be used by a new family, there aren't as many opportunities, and that's part of what's driving the explosion in the pricing and the challenges that young people are having today. We've also decided, as a society, that we need a lot more room. The average size of a home in Massachusetts between 1970 and 2020 went from 1,500 square feet to more than 2,500 square feet. Again, not unique to Lakeville, but I find this pretty fascinating. And when you talk about the approach that we're trying to bring and the homes that we would be providing, what we're... Part of what we're doing, the way in which we can make homes more affordable, is by right-sizing them, by providing a home that works for one or two people in a home rather than four or five. Because in Lakeville, 72% of the population today, household size, is either one, two, or three people. 28% is four people or more, which of course is what we tend to think of as a young family. By contrast, 86% of the houses in Lakeville are single-family homes. Well, single-family homes work for one and two people, but are they the best solution? Sometimes, not always. This is just an example of one of the condominium homes that we're building in Halifax right now that would be well-suited to a single senior or a couple. It has a primary bedroom, it has a den, a laundry room, kitchen, dining room, living room, and of course, would be part of a larger community where they can meet like-minded people. If you need a little more space, we also have two-bedroom condominiums, a little bit larger, still dramatically less than the average. Here, showing two bedrooms, which are separated by the living room, so an adult child that comes home, we're staying with you, you have some privacy, and as well as a den. We built these types of condominiums for years. They're very well-received. I think they fill an important market niche. And when you downsize, or I should say right-size the home, you wind up also being able to save money. So the combination of changes in building code and going all-electric, which is a company we have done, means that one of these condominiums, someone occupying it, is expected to save about $3,200 as opposed to if they were living in a 20-year-old home in Lakeville or anywhere else, not just Lakeville, obviously. So greenhouse gas is down by going all-electric, energy consumption down, energy savings. These are some of the byproducts of right-sizing homes for seniors, which of course, the other important byproduct is that it opens up a home elsewhere where a young family can move and continue the cycle. That's so important. Finally, before I turn this over to Michael, in Halifax, we had Craig Seymour, who I've known for many, many years. He's one of the leaders in the fiscal impact world. He founded RKG Associates. He's now retired from RKG, but for his old clients, he continues to do some work. We had Craig do a... Working with the town of Halifax, do a fiscal impact study, getting access to various records. And in Halifax, this is not Lakeville, in Halifax, for the 102 senior condominiums, he concluded, and the town concurred, that the expectation is that it would yield $452,000 net fiscal positive impact, so roughly $45,000 per condominium. Obviously, the community that we're talking about building at Lakeville is substantially larger, but we would expect the numbers to be very similar. If we move forward with this at all, I would like to propose that we would hire Craig to do a similar analysis right out of the box here in Lakeville. I think it would be very informative. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Michael, who's going to talk a little bit about the town meeting process as we see it.
Thank you, Lloyd.
If I may, it might be just a little better if you stand next to the TV if possible.
Sure.
Just because our mics might pick it up. It's just slightly better.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Good evening, everybody. As Lloyd said, my name is Mike Levin, and I'm the Director of Community Relations for Thorndike Development. We are very excited to be here. We think this is a great project, a great community that we have the potential to build together. Working together is a key to this, and fortunately, we have a blueprint that worked in Halifax. We set about developing a community that Lloyd explained at length in Halifax, and it all started with a meeting like this, and from here, we propelled into a process by which we got approval at the town meeting, and we are actively constructing and delivering on the promises that we made, namely, a three-pronged approach of senior center for the town, the town pickleball courts, as well as those homes that Lloyd mentioned, and we've been developing for over 40 years. The Halifax community, right next door to Lakeville, is on the 58 and 106 area, right near the intersection, right by the Walmart, Grill 58, if you know the area. When we bought this property, the town leaders, select board, town administrator approached us and basically wanted to talk through what our intent was for our development, and they actually came up with the suggestion of senior housing. For them, that was a community need that they wanted us to address, and we were all in. We've been developing for over 40 years, 30 of which we've been doing senior housing. And the issue was, how do we do it? The land, similar to the Lakeville Country Club, was zoned for commercial use, so there were some challenges, but working with Matt Lawler at Robinson Cole and Town Council, we developed a master development agreement, which was comprehensive, that outlined our mutual obligations, both from us and also from the town. We created the Senior Housing Overlay District that was worked through, that allowed the town to control when that district was used via town meeting. Anyone that wanted to use that overlay district still had to go back to town meeting to get approval, so it wasn't something that just sat on the books permanently. Without going into too much of the particulars, but just to give an understanding of the site, we contemplated in that master development agreement the creation of 102 homes spread across the three buildings, various private amenities for the community, a pool and pool house, Central Green, community gardens, and dog park, and then boxed out two of the public amenities in which we had the opportunity to donate land for pickleball, as well as a senior center, and work with the town to structure mitigation payments. But that was what was needed in Halifax, and it's not necessarily what's going to be needed here, but it was something that the town of Halifax said, hey, this is our number-one issue with seniors. How can you help address it? And we did so. We worked with the town and came up with the plan for both the senior center as well as the pickleball courts. The pickleball court is actually in active construction now, and the senior center is in the public bid process. There was just an RFQ for the design team to submit their resumes, and the town is currently reviewing it. From the moment we received our yes vote at town meeting, which was an overwhelming yes, we have been hitting the ground running. This is our first building. We're going to be conveying units in December, and we continue to build the community as we envisioned from the beginning, including those pickleball courts. How we approached this process was we worked collaboratively with the town leaders, figuring out what was right, figuring out the legal aspects of the deal through council and our own experience, and we took our message to the community. So Cal is going to be joining with me, Lloyd's going to join me, Dave's going to join me, and we actually went to the people. We had meetings at the council on aging, we rented space at restaurants and held town hall-style events, we went to community organizations, and we got all the feedback that we could, and we also delivered the message on behalf of the town and us as to what we thought the town wanted and heard, what they wanted, back to us, and we made modifications based off of those inputs. And that's the same type of commitment that we will have here in Lakeville, because like Lloyd said at the beginning, we don't want to wear a black hat. This is a long process that we're all going to be on together, and it all starts with having a collaborative approach. And so we are excited, because this is a really cool community, having a golf course built in, so we're excited. I'm going to turn it over to Matt, who works for Robinson Cole. He helped build out a lot of those agreements that the town needed in Halifax, but he also is here to talk about 61B.
Sure. You can keep it, because I think it's just one slide.
Perfect.
So again, so Matt Lawler, I'm with Robinson Cole, council at Thorndike, and as Michael was describing, we think we could follow the process and the basic template we followed in Halifax here, and we would, I think somewhat, as we'll describe, sort of work in the 61B aspects of that as we go. So as currently zoned, the property does not allow the multifamily senior residential and duplex residential that Lloyd described that are central to the conceptual master plan. So at a high level, what Thorndike and the current owner are proposing is to work cooperatively with the town on a master development agreement, as Michael described. And that master development agreement would set out the scope of the project, set out the mitigation that would apply to the impacts of the project, and then finally, would work toward zoning amendments to allow the commercial... To allow the multifamily residential and senior residential in a commercial district as was done in Halifax. There would be the same sort of overlay process, and we can describe a little more detail during Q and A of kind of what that entailed. If those amendments are successful, as Lloyd described, there would be immediate sort of action around the golf course, but also at that point is when we expect we would work with the current owner to provide the notice to the town with respect to 61B. That's the point at which it is possible to change the use, so the notice would get sent to the town. And then the idea would be consistent with the amendments to the zoning as well as the development agreement. The town would expect to waive the right of first offer that has under 61B at that point, sort of consistent with everyone's understanding of how the project is going to move forward. I think at that point, after we have sort of secured the rezoning, as Michael described in Halifax, the approach was to then really, as aggressively as possible, move forward with the rest of the permitting. There is a fair amount of permitting that remains after the town meeting vote with respect to both local and state approvals, and so we would move forward with that. And I would want to just emphasize that at every step of this process, we would expect that we would work very closely with the town, with town administrator, these boards, I think especially, as well as town council, to make sure that everything we're doing sort of at each step of the process is consistent both with sort of the town's own bylaws as well as state law, especially under 61B. And to some extent, we've already started doing that. The meeting tonight is the result of discussions that have been going on for the last few weeks, as the proposal for the new conceptual master plan has come together. And so I think we would just really want to work very closely both with the town and with town council moving forward. Our role as development council would be to focus first on the master development agreement with the town. We'd be very excited to work with you on that, and then we would obviously be very excited to work with the rest, you know, pursuing the development agreement as we move forward. So I think I'll stop there. Lloyd?
Matt, can you speak to how the 61B process would get folded into the MDA?
Sure. I think the MDA would anticipate within its provisions that upon the rezoning, that would be the point at which, after town meeting in the spring of next year, I think that's kind of the schedule we're trying to work with, that the notice would get sent to the town. There is, I think, 120 days under 61B that the town has. We would, I think, want to have the development agreement say that, assuming that town meeting has voted, assuming the notice is consistent with the project that we have been pursuing, that the town would actually waive that. Would not take the full 120 days, would do it sooner. I think the understanding being that at that point, we have a project that the town wants to see happen. We have permitting that needs to happen, and so we would want to sort of move as quickly as we could, but the development agreement, we think, would lay out all of that. And again, that's based very much on the understanding of what the project is, what its impacts are, what the mitigation that the development agreement would identify going into the process. So I think the town would sort of have a very, very clear understanding of what this project is, and so once it got to the point of the 61B notice, it would be very much, we understand what's happening here. This is a project we have, as a town, want to see happen, and so I think the waiver would flow very quickly from that. That would be the idea. And we... Certainly happy to discuss it during Q and A. We could talk a little bit more about that. So Lloyd, I think you're...
Yeah, I have one more little piece I was going to do.
Thank you.
Just quickly, just to give you a sense of some of the other communities Thorndike's built over these years. This happens to be a shot of an apartment community that we built in Ashland in joint venture with Campanelli. This is condominiums for seniors... Excuse me. This is condominiums that was not age-restricted, but attracted quite a few seniors in Canton, which we recently completed. This was a condominium, or is a condominium, for seniors in Plymouth at the... Off of the Colony Place. A couple of images of our clubhouses. This is a community that we built in Quincy called Chapman's Reach at Marina Bay, which was one of really our first entries into smart growth and traditional neighborhood design. Really a very exciting project. We're all about community. We're all about new beginnings, but we find is that most of the people that are buying homes from us, seniors, are... It's about a change of lifestyle. It's about a new beginning. It's about making new connections, and we understand that, and we try and build on that in spades. This happens to be a concert that we sponsored at Red Mill Village in Norton, which... And we used to do these regularly. A few more shots of Red Mill Village, just giving you a sense of the pedestrian streetscape. Michael had mentioned, in Halifax, we have Victory Gardens. In Red Mill Village here in Norton, we also have Victory Gardens, which were tremendously successful. It's a wonderful thing. If you're working on your garden and someone's working next to you and you don't know anybody, all of a sudden, you strike up a conversation about your best cucumbers or your best maize. We used to have awards in the fall for biggest of this or best of that. This is a home for seniors at Pine Hills, happened to win Best in the Nation at the time, and that brings us back to the master plan. I wanted to say something I neglected to say earlier, and that's, how do we get to 424 units? and that's how do we get to 424 units? The, two ways. One, we started out with the programmatic requirement that we wanted to maintain a, and be able to build a first-class, quality nine-hole golf course and practice facility. We felt that it was important to maintain that legacy, that it would be a helpful amenity for our, for our home buyers and something that we could start to work with the town as a way of helping to put dollars into the, into the town's coffers. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Having said that, we also have been very successful in blending townhomes with condominium buildings. If you visit Sawyer's Reach in Plymouth at the back of Colony Place, we have a combination of townhomes and multi-story buildings. What's common with our customers there is they all want to be part of a new, active adult community. Not everyone wants to be in a large building. Not everyone wants to be in a townhome. And that mix is very important to our marketing. We will market to both at the same time, which allows us to have greater absorption, increase the sales pace. This is a very, very expensive project to get off the ground. We're rebuilding the golf course, building a new clubhouse, building a private wastewater treatment facility, which costs about $4 million. What makes this community different from a number of the other communities that we've built is the level of commitment, financial commitment that needs to occur on day one for this to be the community that we need it to be. It doesn't make any sense for us to wait five years to improve the golf course and save that money because we're shooting ourselves in the foot. We can't get past the first two buildings up at the top right corner before we have to build the wastewater treatment facility and expend that $4 million. So in this case, the size of the community, the number of homes is really essential to the proposal. We think it makes sense. It's a large piece of land. This is all senior living. And we feel very confident that the market is there. There's one statistic, the only thing I wrote down on a piece of paper that I forgot to mention earlier because I found it staggering. And that is in 2022, nationwide, there are, there were 58 million seniors. Seniors being people over the age of 65. In 2050, that number is projected to be 82 million. So over the next 30 years, even though the population of the country is not increasing anywhere near that dramatically, the senior population will go from 58 million to 82 million. We see it every day in our marketing, in our seniors communities. There's a tremendous demand, tremendous interest. It's not right for everyone. Not everyone wants to live in an all seniors community. But it is right for many people. And we think this would be a terrific opportunity. And I think that concludes our, our presentation. We'll have to answer any questions.
Right. Lloyd, I'm going to still let you hold a little bit of this because I missed 15 whole minutes of it. And I don't want to step on you. So please, would you like to continue? Then I'll make it up after. That's fine. For the questions. Nice to see you, Jack.
Sorry.
Well, thanks for coming. Well, that was quite the presentation. I'm going to let this board, do you have any? We'll start with the questions from here and then planning board. And then we'll open it up to the, to the audience. I, it's, it's what I've envisioned. I know that I personally have been an advocate to try to keep our senior population in town. I know that to downsize and to stay in town is important to a lot of our residents. And there's really not a lot of inventory for them in which to do so. So I know we've had conversations about that, that that was a component. So thank you for coming back to your presentation with that. So, yes, Mr. Placa?
Madam Vice Chair, the issue with the deed restrictions for the age, based off of age. I think we've had some prior conversations of that. If somebody just could refresh my memory on that. Do we have kind of a issue? Is it a bylaw issue? Is ensuring that they stay deed restricted that was an issue that didn't come up previously that with, with another, with other developments, it's possible that they could sell and then those deed restrictions follow off? Is that something that we need or is the planning board's working on?
So we, I mean, as part of the development agreement prior to town meeting, I think that's something that we'd be looking for? Absolutely.
Before the zoning as well, the zoning overlay for senior housing would only allow, I think, was 55.
I think that's the piece I was missing with other developments.
And Madam Vice Chair, if I may. And I know there's a member in the audience that can speak to it as well. I believe it went back to the select board and maybe even town meeting vote when it was overturned for one of them at one point for a development that had been earmarked as senior. But then there was a financial, just catastrophe with the real estate market. And it was voted that they would be allowed. But I think that's the exception.
It's going to give, I think that's the, the overlay's going to give us that enforcement to be sure that stays.
And it's not a 40B. So it's not like a financial hardship would have any effect on that. So this would be zoning accepted by town meeting.
And we've not had a senior overlay district. That would be, you know, something new for, for our community too. I did have just a quick question. So you, you mentioned that you're preparing for moving in December in Halifax. Is that what I heard correctly?
Yes.
So did you do the whole project or are you phasing the project?
Can you hear me if I'm talking from here? So the, the project as a whole was, it was approved as one project. So all three buildings that were shown on that master plan, the 102 units, were all brought in at the spring, actually it was a special town meeting in December that the town was holding already and a year ago December. And we then went through the type of permitting process that Matt alluded to, which took about a year, which is what we would expect here. And then we were under, under construction. So all three, we've actually, we're about to start the foundation on the second building. It's been kind of a punky real estate market, very hard to predict. But we've been selling decently. Not as well as I would like, but decently. We're two-thirds of the way through the first building on sales and we've got about a dozen sales in the second building. We've been marketing for about seven or eight months.
That was my next question. So you answered that. Thank you very much.
Well, excuse me. Let me answer the question as it relates to here. We would, we would expect to sell and build somewhere in the neighborhood of 75 condominiums per year. Every development company is different. They have different DNA. Some developers are focused on getting the best price. And if the market slows down, they're going to stick with that price no matter what. That's not us. We are driven by pace and we always have been. And over the past 10 years at our communities, if you take out the COVID years, we have averaged about that number of sales per year at our, at our condominium projects. The punkiness that we're seeing in the market over these last couple of years with elevated interest rates and all the uncertainty that's been going on, ironically is probably helpful for a community like this that's likely to start two years from now or two and a half years from now. Because there's just that much more pent up demand that's occurring. And, and we think our timing would be very good. It's, it was a long build out. I mean, this is, I don't want to fool anyone. This is a 10-year project. Start to finish, it's a 10-year project. From, from this day until the day that the last home is conveyed and the last warranty item is dealt with is 10 years. Maybe it's eight, maybe it's 11, but for planning purposes, it's 10.
Yeah, we'll get, all right, let's turn it over. All right, members and... Oh, nothing.
So I had a handful of questions. I'll just start, some of them are infrastructure related, I guess. Could you explain the water line installation process?
Well, we don't have a process for the water line yet, Andrew. That's something that we, is at the very, very top of our list. Something that we, if we get past this evening, we'd hope to work with you to understand what the options are. But we need town water. Without town, we, we can handle our sewers ourself, but we cannot handle town water. Excuse me. We cannot do this with a private well because of all the offsets and setbacks and whatnot. So it's our understanding that there is taunting water in Route 79 that would need to be brought down to the property. We're hopeful that with the housing proposal of this size, there might be some public grant money from the state that we could tap into. But one way or another, we need to include a water line extension.
Have you thought about any off-site traffic improvements?
Absolutely. I should have mentioned that. Thank you for bringing that up. It would be a, a early first step that we would do. We generally, we have talked with VHB, Vanessa Hagan-Bresslin, which is a major engineering firm. I don't know if they've done anything here in town. But we've, I actually went to school with Bob Bresslin many, many years ago. So we've used them for decades and we intend to use them as our engineers here. They would do the traffic as well as the civil and the wastewater treatment facility and all of that.
Okay. And the last question I had, as I'm sure you might know, we have a lot of developments going on in town. Does that fiscal analysis show all those or is it just your projects specifically?
No, no. The fiscal analysis, the better the information that you can provide to Craig, the better the results will be. He will incorporate everything that's going on in town now and project year by year what the impacts of it will be. And, and he's fantastic. I mean...
So currently, those numbers don't figure in, in anything that you've proposed here?
The, the proposal that we showed was the fiscal impact study that was done in Halifax because we had completed that for Halifax. I showed it only as an example of what we would like to do here in Lakeville.
Yeah, I was just thinking of like the hospital property, potentially the MBTA, Rocky Woods, miscellaneous.
Right. All of that as well as getting access to all of the cost data for the town would be factored in, yes.
That's everything I have.
That's everything you have. All right. Right, Lloyd, other members of the select board?
I have a quick question.
Absolutely.
If I could. And I think the planning chair kind of hit on this already. None of this falls under 40B, right? So nothing would fall under 40Y as far as affordability for anybody?
No, so we'd have to establish a zone for that and pass that at a town meeting separately. So this is, this would be something totally different.
And I think the age restriction itself would preclude from being involved in 40Y anyway. Okay.
Those are starter ones.
And could I get an idea of the price range that you're in, in Halifax currently? And I understand today's dollars aren't tomorrow's dollars.
So I should have brought that information since it's 100% that that question was going to come up. But I forgot to. However, we have a website for the project. If you go to the Thorndike website, you can go through to Featherwinds, which is the name of the Halifax community. All the pricing is on the website. But in round numbers, the prices go from somewhere around $350,000 for a small one-bedroom to $550,000 for the larger two-bedrooms. In today's dollars, you know, that's a, that's a fairly modest number. I'm sorry to say that it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Placa, did you have any questions? All right, I'd like to open that to the planning board. All right. John?
Yeah. No, again, nice presentation. We were happy when you guys came back. Again, the presentation a year and a half ago where it was impressive then, still impressive now. Couple items. One, I noticed on your sheet, the 240 units, you have four-story units?
Yes, four-story buildings.
Right. So I think our zoning bylaws only allow three, like the 35-foot max. So I don't know how that factors in because that's going to be about 60 units, right? I'm assuming? Oh, I don't know what the floors are. I don't know how many, per unit.
48 units in a building.
For the four-story unit?
Yeah. Right. So that would have to be part of the consideration in the overlay district. I mean, the way we would expect this to work, and we've done this a number of times in the past, is we would, it would be new zoning that would be created for that overlay district. And it would lay out an entire program that, that works with the proposal. So it wouldn't, we, we could have, the fact that the overlay district would allow for four-story condominium buildings doesn't mean that you would need to be allowing that in any other zone.
But now, just to kind of piggyback on what John's saying, so that is where you're going to see pushback. Like I've already gotten text messages saying, I love it, except for the four-story. So I think you are going to see pushback. And that, and that 35-foot is, is what has been accepted previously at town meeting. So I think you are going to see people more inclined to, to want to see it stay at the three-story. I don't know if that's something you've considered or if you could take that into consideration.
Well, this is a first plan. I'll start there. It would be very challenging. We need the unit count. I mean, as in, I would say to you, if we can't, if you don't feel that you as boards can get behind a project of this scale, I completely understand. But it doesn't work if it gets smaller. So that would mean we would need to find another way to accommodate those homes. I will tell you, and I'll do some pointing here if I can, first of all, the comment is not surprising to me. Second, I will tell you that if this is the only issue we have going through the town meeting, I will consider it omitted. However, having said that, these two buildings at the top that are closest to the neighbors are the three-story buildings. These buildings that are buried back in the center of the project that are a quarter mile away from any neighbor are where we're showing the four-story buildings. So we were trying to be reflective and responsive to that issue by how we located them. There's a four-story townhouse building at Sawyer's Reach in Plymouth that we built. If you go to Colony Place and you go to the very back to where our community is, when you drive in, the building on the left is four stories. The buildings on the right are three stories. They're exactly the height and scale of the buildings that we would be proposing here. So I would encourage you to take a look. Obviously, when we go to four stories, we're able to create more open space. It's part of how we're able to create the program that we can. And I will tell you, they're much more efficient. And that means that we get our price points down. And I have to ask the question, and I'm sure I'll be having this, we'll be having this discussion many times, at least I hope we will, that in this particular situation, the impact of going an extra floor in the center of this golf course, to me, is a reasonable trade-off to be able to get the price of the homes down for our seniors and to be able to preserve more open space. That's where I come out. And if we can't get there, we can certainly look at three stories. I'm not quite sure what that would require us to give up. But, you know, that extra, there are one, two, three, four, five four-story buildings. So that means there are 60 units. So at 36 units, that means we have to find someplace for two more buildings. And we have to raise the price on the homes. You got text messages already.
I did. Absolutely.
With the 35 feet too, and I believe some of this is going to get, it'll come up during, and again, this is a site plan review, but it'll come up with, the fire chief is going to have an issue with
Sure.
apparatus, his reach, because now you're, you're putting that if that outreach is, you know, because I don't know what the heights of that is, but you know, 12 stories, 12 feet. you know, 'cause I don't know what the heights of the, that is, but you know, 12-story, 12-feet.
Kind of get the new ladder, huh?
Yeah, the new ladder. So, yeah, that.
And those buildings will have elevators as well.
That'll be a key.
Elevators, yeah.
He doesn't understand that. He doesn't understand that one.
Good question. Yeah, and then, yeah.
The fact that the zoning is 35 feet right now.
Yes.
From a, from the way in which this would get shaped is not, is not an issue.
Right.
But, but I understand that that's the expectation and so on and so.
Right. The residents all have to go for this.
These buildings would be 10 or 11 feet higher than that?
Right. Okay. Dan?
Yeah, so again, I echo my colleagues here in saying this is a great presentation. I mean, glad you folks are back into the mix to discuss this with us. It's hard to see from these renderings, but is this the entire footprint of the Lakeville Country Club?
Yes, it is.
Okay. That was one of the questions I had. And, 'cause I know a lot of the residents are gonna wonder about that. And in terms of this footprint, again, I don't have my glasses on to see this, but how are the buffer zones is for the residents in terms of the ones that live in nearby residential areas? So what are you folks thinking in terms of the spacing in between the units and so forth and those neighborhoods?
Great questions. I, I have to be honest, I didn't come prepared to get into that level of detail this evening. But someone's taking notes.
Where's that note taken? Okay.
We'll follow up.
All right. Yeah. All right. Yeah, I, I would say that, that would be something that the residents would probably wanna know, just in terms of that. But in terms of the overall presentation, what you folks have really given us, I mean, you know, as a board, we have discussed just about a year ago in, in the plans of everything else, you know, a senior overlay district for the town. It's, it's greatly needed. And, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, if we can come to some sort of agreement, I think it'd be a great opportunity. The other thing too is additional listening sessions for the residents of the town. Those that can't be here tonight, I think, would be good with the select board's permission, of course. You know, for those residents that have questions and whatnot. And as renderings come about, I think would be very good as well. So just some feedback on that. But thank you.
Dan?
Okay. Yeah, good, good first step. Why are we, why are we limiting to four stories?
What do you mean by that?
Well...
Higher?
Yeah, you know, if, if, if count is gonna be so important, and, you know, I look at the four buildings up near the top, and certainly you wanna keep those as low as possible. And I agree that the buildings there in the middle are a long ways from anybody. And I don't necessarily see, at least an initial reason, why they can't go higher.
Well, actually, I can give you a very practical answer.
Okay.
And that is that the building codes are such that when you go from four stories to five stories, the type of construction, you can no longer do conventional wood frame structures.
Yes.
And as such, the cost of that construction goes up materially and significantly. And so we lose the benefit. Going from three stories to four stories is a very positive financial benefit. Obviously, still one foundation, still one elevator. When you go above four stories, that dynamic changes completely. And, and that's, that's a practical reason why we would not propose going higher.
To go any higher, okay. What about pushing the buildings together so that they're not individual pieces?
Well, I mean, look, the, that gets down to a marketing issue. And we've got a lot of experience in this. We've done some things right and we've done a lot of things wrong. But what we have found is that the spacing that you see between the buildings is about what you need in order for people on the ends who are looking across at another home and another building not to feel as though it's right in their face. You know, we price each condominium individually. So a home that has, is looking across at another building is probably gonna be priced a little less than one that isn't, and one that has a water view will be priced a little differently. All of that stuff gets taken into account. And I'm not gonna say that it can't move around some, but this is a spacing that, that we feel works well.
Yeah, I mean...
Excuse me, there's one more thing. And that is, the, one of the advantages to building for-sale housing as opposed to apartments is that you're, you're able to build these buildings one at a time. So in Halifax, for example, we didn't start our second building until we had our first building substantially sold out. In an apartment community of which we've built several thousand apartments, that's not the approach. You, you start construction on the first building and you complete the project, and then you, you lease it all up. So if we were to combine the buildings and make the buildings larger, then that cost of entry, you know, what it costs us to start off and what the expectations are from our lender, all changes and the dynamic doesn't work. This is the sweet spot. We've done this many times before.
Okay. And, and, you know, one other, I wouldn't necessarily call it an issue, but I'd like to see how it, how it works, is I see too many straight lines.
Too many straight lines?
Yeah.
He's an architect, by the way.
What was that?
He's an architect, by the way.
Well, so am I.
Okay. So, so, you know, I, I like it, I like to see it work with the, with, with the land a little bit, a little bit better.
It's a fair, it's a fair, fair comment. It is.
Okay. And then the, the last, I, I, I love that you talked about over 55 in population numbers. Where did the last number come from?
It's from a U.S. Census projection.
Okay. It's a census projection. Where, where do they suspect the total population goes with that number?
I don't have that information.
You don't have that one?
But I will, I will get it for you.
Jack, do you have any questions?
You know, in relation to what David was talking about, David and I are in the same community of LeBaron Hills. I'm closer down to the townhouses. And as you folks well know, the Butters do not wanna go beyond three stories. Because I, granted it, they can go down to, to, to a four-story, and I know that they don't want that. And I would think that the Butters here, knowing what's happened at the Butters over in LeBaron Hills, would say, "It's good for them, it's good for us, and we don't want four stories." And I, and I can understand that in this kind of a golf course setting. So I, that's my only concern, David, that they're gonna, they're gonna push back just like they did. And you know how tough they push back down at the, at the library. I mean, we're gonna get some serious pushback.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, you guys make the final call.
Yeah.
But that's my concern, that, you know, and I'm, I'm with these, see these people every day, and they're wondering, "When are they gonna put them up?" "And how many stories?" And all this and that. So I think you need to be aware of that, that the Butters over there are gonna be just as vociferous as they are in LeBaron Hills. And they'll, and, you know, I've talked to Mohammed, obviously you know who Mohammed is, many times about this. And he's, you know, "Okay, okay, if that's what's gonna take to get them built, fine." But that's not what he wants, like you.
I know Mohammed. I sold him land once.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We're very familiar with it. And the only other issue is rental units. I know from a fact, having friends and relatives that need rental units in their, in their older 60s. To get on a list on any town in my, in this whole area, they're down in the 70s and 80s. I mean, they will literally not be around when they need it. I mean, so I think that's, I think we should consider some of the rentals units, like we have at the Fairways in LeBaron Hills.
But are you planning any rentals? This is all...
We're not planning on building rental.
Yeah, I didn't have that considered until we had any.
Having a age-restricted rental community is tricky. It, it's harder to price, harder to finance, harder to, to lease up. It's not something that we have experience in, and I would be reluctant to include it in this proposal.
Thank you, Jack. Donna, did you have any questions this time?
Most of the questions were answered, but I did not have the benefit of hearing the proposal the last time. So it was really great to be able to hear it, the community outreach piece, the 61B piece, and then listening to the questions that came up. So I appreciated the, the presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you. I think everybody's excited to have you back. You were well received the first time. I can't wait to hear what everybody thinks and get the residents' feedback. I hope that we can move forward.
So you don't think anyone will slash my tires while I do?
No, absolutely. I think, I think the office.
They did that to Mohammed's wife when I went to, I had flat tire.
No, no.
It's just a coincidence.
Not here.
Don't worry about it.
Oh, John has a...
Can I, can I, one more question?
Of course.
The golf course, I know these are over the 10-year span, but I know the golf course is gonna be a, a selling feature.
Right.
So when is that, I guess, in the...
We would, we, we have been, we are in negotiations with Sterling Golf. Sterling Golf, as I mentioned, is a extremely well-respected golf management company. They both manage courses that they don't own, and they also own courses.
I think so.
Ten of them in New England. Our discussion with them and part of our agreement with the seller is that when we, if we are successful at town meeting, and of course, we would love to go to spring town meeting, that might be a little aggressive, but that would be our preference. We would, we expect to sign a management contract with Sterling that would kick in the day after town meeting. And they would begin renovations of the golf course. And it's a little tricky, obviously. We would be renovating those holes that we intend to save and not those that we'll be getting rid of. But we recognize that the golf course is going to be an important amenity for us and for the town. There's one thing I, I didn't get into tonight, and I don't wanna spend too much time on it. But we, we know that the town is gonna be looking to us for some level of mitigation. Every project we have built has always included mitigation, and we understand that. This is a somewhat interesting situation because I, I have never been a proponent of including affordable housing in new market rate housing for a number of reasons. What it does is it puts the, we have a 40B project that we did not permit, but we did wind up buying after it had been permitted and started in Raina. It's going on right now. It's called Larkwood.
Oh, yeah.
And it's 152 townhouse units. It's not age-restricted, 25% affordable. And we calculated that having that 25% affordability adds $100,000 to every market rate unit.
Driving it up.
And that means that every single young family that's trying to buy a town when we get started is, is taking on that full burden where, in my judgment, is something that should be shouldered by a much larger community. As we get into this a little bit more, we would like to propose to the town some sort of a profit-sharing mechanism with the golf course as a way to generate proceeds to the town that can be used in a variety of ways for, for years and years to come. So if we were able to put $150,000 or $200,000 a year in the town coffers that could be used to supplement mortgages for families starting out, to help with sweat equity projects, to be used for public parks, to help with the park commissions, since there is that recreational component here, in any which, any way that over time, that would be a annual cash flow for 10 or 20 years or something like that. And that, that would be part of, an important part of a mitigation program that we would like to propose to the town. What we don't wanna do is include affordable housing in this seniors' project because the regulations that, we used to be DHCD, and what am I supposed to call it now?
EOHLC. Forget the word, the alphabet soup.
The regulations that they have as to, in order for seniors to qualify for an affordable unit, the rules of engagement are very, very different than someone who's not a senior. Because any of the assets that they have, that they've been living in a bungalow, the qu, the value of that counts towards their, their, their asset base. And as a result, there are very few seniors who, seniors who look for affordable units have become discouraged. And as a result, they don't look. They look for other options. And so it's very challenging to sell affordable senior homes. And you talked before about having issues with people looking to get rid of affordability. That's, that's something that we've never done, but that's a situation where I would worry. So we'd like to find, in Halifax, we wound up making mitigation payments, we are making mitigation payments, I should say, towards their senior center as well as donating the land. We're not paying for all of it, but we're paying for a significant piece of it. We're building the pickleball courts. You know, we would like to see, participate in upgrading the Cedar Pond Park, putting a, a profit-sharing packet...
Clear pond.
Bear pond, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Bear pond, I got the C right, at least, right there. And, and something along the lines with the golf course because that's an amenity that I think will be here for, for a long time to come.
Yeah, you, you can also take solace in the fact that DW Field up in Brockton, the city all of a sudden found out that they were making money and have, have put additional money into the course to actually improve their, their standing.
Yes. I'm told by Sterling that the practice facilities are very profitable. I know, I personally am a much better golfer on the driving range than I am on the golf course. And, oh, you too?
No, no. No, it was opposite usually.
All right. So they've wrapped up...
Yes, thank you.
Select board questions and...
We're good.
Planning board questions. And I think we can get a little summary after about, you know, where you guys are at, even though I know we've had lots of conversations about just the absolute need for the senior population and to be able to serve them in this town in a, in a more comprehensive way. I wanna open it up to the members of the audience. Do we have somewhere where anyone can speak for, for questions?
Don't really have a podium or anything.
But hold the mic in their hand and speak. I'd like to limit it to three minutes per person. And I'd like you to make sure you identify yourself for the record. Show hands, who would like to speak. I have someone, a gentleman in the front and then a gentleman in the back.
You wanna just go right behind the planning board? Over to over here? Oh, okay. Camera?
Okay. Hi, I'm Wayne DiMarano, 10 Reservoir, Lakeville. Fairly close. I just have one question. Now, with a, a complex like this, you're gonna need a lot of water. Do you have a trajectory of how much water you're gonna need? And then there'll be another follow-up question, how much, are we limited to water?
I, I don't have that answer in the C thing, but we're...
We'll put that on the notes.
We will get it to you right away.
And a follow-up question, are we limited to how much water access we have?
We have about 90,000 gallons left of our allocation with tons.
And what are we using out of the 90, out of like the total, what do we have?
So we totally have 300,000 gallons. We're down to about 90,000 left.
Okay, 90, all right. So we, we have no clue how much that would be. All right, well, that's a good note to put up. And, and when you develop this, are you gonna be like doing it on a vast scale or are you gonna go in phases, one-on-one, or are you gonna just do it as your sell-up?
It would be in phases. We have not thought through a phasing plan yet. But that's a good question too. We got that on the list.
All right. Okay. Now, this 55-year-old, 55 and older, when I hear the word senior, I think it's retirement age of 65, is that flexible?
No, the 55 is, is federal law. So by, by federal statute, 55, if you're 55 and older, you're considered a senior. And the statutes that we need to bill to are 55. Anything else is considered age discrimination. There is another category that cuts in at 62, but that's not something that is used that often, is not something we would plan on using here.
But there really is, I was such a senior.
Wow. It's depressing, you know, I'm...
I'm still in denial, I guess. Yeah. How long does a process like this take to put a vote together? What's the next steps that we're gonna be going through after this meeting?
Next steps, we'd be following up and making sure we had all our questions answered from outstanding from this meeting, then meeting again, and when it came time for town meeting warrant, to decide if something got on there. That would be the broad strokes, as it were, but there's all sorts of bits and pieces in there, the water allocation and the water line.
Development agreement.
And any of the development agreements and how robust they are and how they come as it were, but there's all sorts of bits and pieces in there, the water allocation and the water line.
Development agreement.
And any of the development agreements, and how robust they are, and how they come together, will all be mitigating factors in getting it as, you know, to the town, and getting it into the hands of the people.
Great. What do you think this will do for the home values of the button residents?
You know how I'm going to answer that.
What do you think about that?
I can't weigh in with a professional opinion on that, so, but, good development is always a good thing.
Yeah.
Bad development is always a bad thing, so.
Well, if it's worth more, maybe the houses will go up in value quite a bit. So, okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. I have a follow-up from his question. When, when he was speaking about the water allocations and, and what we're looking for, are you looking strictly to use just the water from the town water or the Taunton water source? Are you going to have like a combination for the wells for the golf course as well?
All of the irrigation would be with, with private wells, yes, it would just be drinking water.
Thank you.
Good question.
I believe Mr. LeCamera would like to speak, please come on up. Sorry for the tight quarters, Mr. LeCamera.
Our original camera, 32 Old Powerhouse Road. I just want clarification on the, what does the municipal golf course mean?
Municipal golf course is intended to mean that it would not be part of the condominium community. It would be a separate public golf course, which would be open to all Lakeville residents and residents and individuals, that's what I meant by municipal.
Okay, and who would own it?
Well, that's a good question, and one that we need to talk through, but there are various options for owning it. One would be a private company like Sterling Golf that could buy it. It's not inconceivable to think about the town acquiring the golf course at some point in the future, if that was something that it was interested in doing. But it would not, excuse me, it's not the plan to have the senior project open.
Okay, since he used two minutes already.
Well, we'll add some more time on your minutes.
Thank you very much. I have a report here that shows that there's 138 acres for the golf course.
Okay.
That was your figure?
I think that sounds right.
Okay. There's 60 acres of wetlands.
That sounds right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Somebody needs to answer that question?
I don't have that answer for you this evening.
You there, Nancy?
I'm here, but I don't know the exact.
Okay, I know what it is, it's 60. So that leaves you 76 acres for development. How much is the golf course acreage out of that 76?
I don't have that information for you this evening, we'll have to get that to you.
Okay, so again, so the next question is, how, how much is the acreage for the, for the units?
We, we will, we will provide you with a breakdown of all the acreage by use.
Okay. I assume, is this clear pond exit, or is that clear pond?
Up at the top.
Okay, so this is another exit onto Crook and Lee.
Yes.
Crook and Lee. So, 424 units in that area, plus the nine whole golf courses, is pretty tight, really is, that's a lot of units in that area. So this project is four times as big as the one in Halifax.
Correct.
Okay. So, the question is, is that if you, if you took the 76 acres, you don't have to answer the planning board yet, and you're going to put single-family houses in there, I believe you can only put about 40 in there, basically, on zoning. Yes, no?
I'm sorry, I missed.
Say that, I'm sorry.
Okay. So if you had 70 acres, 76 acres of development, I don't know what the golf course is going to be, but you'd only be able to develop 40 single-family houses in that area, and what I was calling zoning is at 70,000 square feet. Makes sense?
Right, that's why it would be done as an overlay, and all of that would have to be.
No, I'm just asking a question about if it was a conventional subdivision.
Right.
It would only allow 40 units.
I, I don't, I can't answer that, because I don't know what the breakdown would be.
Well, I mean, if you had 76 acres divided into.
Well, we know that it has to be 70,000 square feet with 52,000 square foot of uplands, so whatever that breaks down.
But you'd still have, you'd still have streets and.
Oh, I agree, I agree, but what I'm saying is that this project is 10 times bigger than a conventional subdivision, right? Had a fair stake? I just want everybody to know the magnitude of this project, it's huge.
Right.
A huge, huge project. I'm going to take a quote from the chairman of the sub board from last meeting, who said, "We desperately need economic development in economic, you know, businesses and stuff like this."
Absolutely.
This area is zoned, you know, for business, and you're going to take away more business zone property in town. So the question would be, the Lakeville Hospital, okay, is, is not a warehouse, you decided to go with housing, and that is 438 housing units on that property, right? So the commercial drive is, you know, 200 units plus 110, and the T has approached the town about putting 200 more units on the old T station.
Yes.
Okay, and that's going to happen, you know, it's going to happen, whether you like it or not. That means that 70% of that industrial power is going to be public, 70%. Once again, losing all this development, all this land for business development. So then you hear, I hear about Rocky Woods, and Rocky Woods is 179 units, and the rumor was that, oh, why don't we rezone that for commercial or industrial, right? It's a little late to do that, that's 300 acres, the town could have bought that for $3 million.
Town could have bought the Lakeville Country Club, too, but they chose not to, so here we are.
I mean?
So the Lakeville.
I'm sorry, you want to talk about that, you want to talk about?
I'm just, I'm just saying, you want to bring up what could have been, let's not talk about what could have been, and just if you have comments about this project, I can stick to it.
I'm just saying, this could have been. So the question is.
Where's the economic development?
Where's the economic development? There's another 150 acres behind the Rocky Woods property that can be developed as commercial, that should be rezoned, I brought it to the planning board three years ago, and they didn't want to do it. So that should be seriously considered. Okay, so where are we, as far as housing and the town is concerned? Right now, permitted, 438 units of Lakeville Hospital, permitted, ready to go, you know, somebody can come in now and develop it and so forth. Rocky Woods, 179 units of housing, some 55, some affordable, most of it is single-family houses, and that's about 98% approved, going through a period of review. LaBaron, 100 units, just got refit, just got permitted to finish off that project. Long Point Road, 33 units of condos at the final phase of that project, it's always 33 there now. Then the T station of 200, 200 units is in the process. That's 950 units that is already on the, ready to be developed, okay?
Not all of those are permitted.
I'm sorry, I may interrupt, and you?
I'm sorry, but you're, I think the three minutes was up.
Oh, you're starting?
I will let you finish, Richard.
Well, thank you, because you brought it up as how's businesses concerned.
I understand, and I, I think you have a very valid point, even though these are over, spanned over years, this is not a one-year shot that all of these units are coming in.
So it's 950 units, and this proposal is 424, I have 400, so that's 300, 1,350 units. That means that the population, the housing unit population will go up by 25% in the next, I'll use this example, 10 years. 20% of our housing units, we have 4,500 housing units right now, that's a lot. And then the population, population is going to go up, our population is just under 12,000, around 12,000 people, our population is going to go up about 2,400, it's just based upon these housing units alone, 2,400 people, that's a 20% increase, too. So then we only want to talk about the how and low property, which I'm extremely disappointed the town didn't get the opportunity to purchase it, that's 550 acres, that's going to get developed, too. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And I, I know economic development is important to everyone at this table, and we've had conversations, and it's something, we are going to come to an inflection point where it's going to become overwhelming. However, some of these developments that we have in town, as you know, they're, they're not by choice, and that's kind of a different story, whereas in, this is the type of development that the people have asked for in town. I know Member Carbone has been bringing it up every time since 2019, about managing and giving somewhere for our senior population to go. And, but, Mr. LeCamera's not wrong, we, we don't have any economic development in town. You know, it, I have had conversations with various businesses, and we need to find a way to be more business-friendly, especially if we are bringing in more residential. The only promising conversation I've had lately was, was with the chief growth officer from Sprouts Market, who said he might be interested in coming to Lakeville, and is interested in coming and visit and having a conversation. So we do have some stuff on the horizon, but housing can't be our only business.
Absolutely, and, and we can't talk in, in speculation, because we have to deal with what we have in front of us, and we can't look back and say what could have been, because here we are. And it still has to go through a whole process of town meeting.
Yep.
The residents have to be in, in favor, two-thirds majority, for a zoning change to pass for the overlay, I assume it's the same, I think it's the two-thirds, so.
But then the same conversation could be the what-ifs, you know, what if something else goes in there, what if something, you know, less desirable, or still just as impactful, but less desirable.
Or more so impactful because of the rural setting.
Yep, so, points taken, for sure, and we are taking it very seriously on economic development, but it is a really horrible market for, for having that conversation, and trying to bring brick and mortar to town, where, you know, what is it, brushing your teeth and eating Oreos, it's, it's not, it hasn't been very fruitful, but it's something I know we're really pushing for. So we will try to do better as a board, and as just individuals, trying to welcome businesses to town, and I would love to see the planning board, you know, start coming up with a way to expedite things for businesses coming into town, as well as the economic development committee working in concert.
We would love to, and we definitely need a planner to help us get to those goals, absolutely.
And, and, you know, just solid economic development formulas as well.
Yeah.
Any other members of the audience would like to speak to this project in particular, or the impacts of this project?
I guess I'll, I'll present, Noel Rilla. This developer seems more creative than what I've seen from other developers, and what I would envision for that property, I think it could be something really beneficial for Lakeville. I like the idea of the taller buildings being in the middle of it, so they're not staring down at Reservoir Avenue, or. I could envision something similar to, maybe on a smaller scale, Courtyard Park in Plymouth has a business center where entrepreneurs meet and they, they timeshare office space, and you could draw, in terms of economic development, it could be a draw, especially if you have a nice little restaurant where there's some good chow. You know, I, I think that it has to be not thought of as just housing, or just golf. I think that, I like the idea of it having a draw for people in the community and young entrepreneurs, so that they didn't have to go to Plymouth for all that. You know, I, I met my son in Pine Hills to, for coffee, and, you know, we just walked around, it had a nice feel, and.
Because it's a destination, and it's a lifestyle.
Yeah, not in such a sound, so, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other questions from the board, comments from the board?
No, but, yeah, that, that red mill crossing.
One at the end.
One at the end.
Having heard this presentation, as we heard the one from Rhino, I've only been on the planning board for five years, my only concern is, as Rich has already said, we keep building housing, which is, I'm not opposed to it, but our infrastructure is going to take a huge hit, and the school system is going to take a huge hit.
Not enough 55 and older housing, it statistically won't.
Okay, yeah, but I'm, I'm concerned that if we put in mixed-use housing and all that kind of stuff, where we bring in more families, like we do down in where I live, in LaBaron Hills, because all those townhouses.
That would be more impactful on the budget as well.
Yes, I mean, my concern is, how's it going to impact on the school system?
But that's a different project, this project is.
I agree, I agree. My, I guess my only, when we go to, it's really up to the, the people in the town, all the abutists.
It really is, our job is to, to bring things to the people of town, and either support it, or, or not support it, and, but really ultimately, it, it's up to the people of town. We could, we could bring them all sorts of projects that we think are great, and they can still.
Oh, I agree.
Put them down.
I agree, and I, I would, I, you know, like, like, you know, Rich is, we sat through the, the hospital project, and the abutists went on and on and on, and to their credit, he was successful, I guess, I mean, if you want to call it that. But I think that's the concern, that we go to the town meeting with this project or any other project, and.
And I think you brought up a good point about the outreach. But I think that's a good point about the outreach. The outreach for some of the projects in town has not been a positive experience for the residents, I'll have to tell you. There was a project that went through that was scare tactic-y.
So I think the more recent, so what we saw more recently with the old hospital property was well-received.
No, no.
Compared to the prior.
The prior, yes, yes, yes.
The more recent, I think, was.
Probably three years ago, I'd have to say, yeah, there was some negative outreach, it, it turned out to be.
Right.
Whereas in, it turned around completely, and there was positive outreach, and it was the difference between, you know, people supporting it and people like, reaching and putting signs in and on, not to support it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I get, my only concern is, I hope we don't just take the, not we, the town, take the easy way out and put in housing, rather than doing the good fight. Because if we don't, I mean, at some point, we're going to, the only income we're going to be getting is from the renters, right?
There's no renters from.
Well, I mean, you know, the more, you know, the only, the only people.
You mean the taxes?
Right.
Okay.
That's all we have, because we don't have any more industry.
That's right, 84, 85%.
I mean, we can build all the marijuana places we want over there.
All right. And with that, we'll wrap that up. Andrew, did you have anything else that you wanted to wrap up with this, with the discussion for today?
Yeah.
Did we have this listed as anything besides questions and answers? I know we have a stack of questions that are follow-up questions, I would love that to be part of the presentation, when the presentation goes online, like an FAQ section, where it has all the questions that were asked here, and the answers provided by you, with any visuals, any, any additional visuals, as they seem to be very effective. But really, it was the water line, the off-site traffic improvements, people taking a little road trip to Halifax.
Plymouth.
And Plymouth, and taking a look at, seeing the height of the fourth floor over in Plymouth at Sawyer's Reach, and then really having a, a good think on what projects that we would be looking for in town, and thinking on that profit share on the golf courses, if that's something we'd like to hitch our wagon to, as kind of, instead of a physical project, which has been the norm in the past, to, you know, something that is a budget builder or a revenue source for years to come. And then the water allocation, how that works, and looking at what Mr. LeCamera said as the coverage of the acres as far.
That would be through, I mean, that would be provided at site planning view, but if they can get it sooner than.
But if you've got it, people are going to want to know it, and I would like to have those answers, or to be able to point them to somewhere where those answers exist, in order to have a conversation where there's no information asymmetry, where we're all on the same page.
And maybe the price point proximities, and.
Thank you. What was the proximities question, the price point?
Yeah, the price point, maybe include the elevators question, and they are just telling, anybody who hasn't watched the presentation can see right there, elevators, yes.
Anything public safety related as well?
In the red mill crossing info, I think restaurant in that area would be.
Correct. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I know it wasn't on the agenda, but if we can add it to the next agenda, where this board can vote to identify a liaison to work with.
Thank you.
The town administrator, so that we can start to.
Push it forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can put that on.
Do you need someone from planning, too, or no?
I would, yes.
Okay.
If anyone wants to volunteer, please reach out to Andrew.
In the list, voted in next meeting.
Madam Chairman, are these folks going to be doing outreach meetings so that?
Well, let, they did mention they are available for outreach meetings, so that's what will come through the liaisons, about the how, the when, the where, and, and the why.
I think that would make it a lot easier before we get to the town meeting.
And then we can, you know, book off space at the library, depending on how many people are going to, that's our big spot. That's our hot meeting spot, if we have. That's our hot meeting spot if we have anything with a decent number of attendees.
Are we good to go?
I think we are.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you so much for taking your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you. Madam Vice Chair, we're taking over while I was on the plane. Yeah. Do you have their conference room? Got pump water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to.
So we, quiet now for a minute. So we have the.
You're gonna show it down right away.
Now we need to discuss a custom vote to set the final warrants.
Hey, will.
No, we haven't gotten to yet. But the, we both got warrants. We still, we still got stuff.
Yeah.
What's on the warrant?
You mean to see an ID, yes. See an ID, yes.
So we got, we cut that down to their bones.
Yeah, we did, okay.
This is the revolving account for conservation.
I am, yes, sir.
So. I wonder if we're gonna announce that. If these come, if we will discuss. And did you mention there are citizens positions and citizens needs? Should I throw that in? But this is now, this is supposed to sign. I can see we're guiding the ship.
Yes, well. Please, because I'm. Experience over weeks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to go back to discussion and possible vote to set the final warrants of this fall special town meeting and to sign the document.
So Madam Chair, I mean, earlier, the board had voted to the articles, to put the articles on the warrant for the fall.
And all articles made it on.
There were five, yes.
Okay, all five articles. I'd like to, would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to set the final warrant as presented and sign the document.
Seconded.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion from any of the members? Hearing none, roll call.
Hunt, aye.
Blood, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Handito, aye.
Very much. Item number three, discuss and possible vote to approve $15,200 payment to the Nature Conservancy Box Turtle Mitigation Fund related to natural heritage and endangered species program, N H E S P, requirements related to the new fire station building project. Andrew, do you wanna speak to this briefly?
Yeah, so this has been going on quite a while since the fire station project became even a thought, really. As part of the natural heritage process, communities are asked to offset disturbances to land with land protection in the form of either a transfer of land or a payment. At the November 2024 special town meeting, we had set aside seven or eight parcels to hopefully meet that qualification. And it turned out, natural heritage did not like any of them. So.
Could you just dive into that a little bit? Because that, that is a frustration because I know that we have tried and failed on multiple building projects where it is, seems that they want, you know, that buildable of land. And even that doesn't even satisfy sometimes depending on, on things. It feels like moving the goalposts a little bit.
Yeah, from, I guess from my perspective, all the pieces of land that we own aren't really developable.
Yeah.
And they, they kinda see that. And so when, when we offer a piece of land that's not really developable, they really don't care for it because they say.
But forgive me if I'm wrong, it, it, it's not just strictly developable, it's impact. And something where we're allowing nitrogen loads to be less and, and all of those things. That should count as impact, but it never seems to count as impact. Not that we're planning to do a lot of building projects in the future. It's just a, an ongoing frustration. But.
So they came back with essentially our fine, our, our donation to the turtle conservancy.
Yeah.
Which is $15,120. And this fire station project can't break ground until this is finalized.
Yeah. So. Comments?
I mean, I, I completely understand, having lived through this through the police station. I gotta say that this, if we've voted to approve this payment, I think that we'll be able to move that project forward. And I don't think that it is as, as much as that we might be able to sell the land if we were to do so.
Yeah, so just to, to mention, and I could be wrong, it was between 8,000 and 10,000 for the police station for the project. And I know we had estimated this at somewhere, this fine, as it were, which is interesting, between 30,000 and 50,000 dollars. So it's less dear than we thought at the beginning. And then Member Carbone, you know, we're pushing that up against what?
$200,000 or $400,000 worth of lots. So it's a better financial deal for us to pay for it, even though no one's actually explained to me why we need to. So, yeah, it's just a, it's a, it's a do not pass go type of thing for the fire station, so.
Yeah, and we're ready, we're ready.
I will take a motion.
I will make a motion that the select board vote to approve the $15,120 payment to the natural, nature conservatory, conservancy, Box Turtle Mitigation Fund.
Seconded.
Notion and a second. Any further discussion on the turtles?
Just wanna give a shout out to Nate Darling.
Please.
He put in hours and hours of his life into this.
Yes.
Our very own turtle boy.
Yeah.
Yes. This has been one of those situations where Nate had the, the forward thinking of trying to, you know, minimize.
Yep, I remember having a conversation a couple of years ago that we knew it was coming.
Yeah.
That's very impressive to pull it down.
So thank you, Nate Darling.
Yes, thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hunt, aye.
Blood, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Handito, aye. And that is it for the regular items, unless I'm missing something, Member Carbone?
No, we went right through everything.
Perfect. Announcement for the next select board meeting date is October 21st at the Lakeville Police Station at 5:45. And we will be going through warrant review at that time. Is there anything else to come before the board? Hearing nothing.
Oh, I do have one thing.
Damn it.
This is real quick, though. As I mentioned in the, the announcements, we have the trunk or treat, which is Sunday. I know the select board heads said that we would do a trunk. So I know you're all looking at me like I'm crazy. So I will, you know what, I will help offline coordinate this as a surprise.
Buy candy. That's really what we want you to say.
Yeah, I will buy candy to support.
Madam Vice Chair, I was hoping that, I'm hoping that the weather is good because I have a lot of space on the flatbed of my truck that I'm gonna have some hay bales on and so forth. And I will be over there with my lovely bride.
Fantastic.
That was it.
That's it, all right.
Madam Chair, one real quick. Andrew, any, we talked about the last select board meeting, a potential public forum for Rocky Woods. Any response from the developer?
No response yet.
All right, we'll give it one more shot and then we'll wait till after town meeting and have it, and pull it back again because it tends to get a little cramped. You know, right before town meeting is things that we're trying to get done. But I think, anything else? Any announcements? Oh, and the, the snow persons will be at trunk or treat as well for snow person donations as well. All right. Take a motion.
Motion to adjourn at 7:45.
Seconded.
Motion in second. Roll call.
Hunt, aye.
Blood, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Handito, aye.